Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video covers the testimony of Antonella Willby, an independent contractor who was hired by Ocean Gate during their Titanic expeditions in July 2022. Already working part-time as an ROV pilot and technician since 2018, Miss Willby's duties were to include maintenance of the vehicle, gathering data, and also included the plan for her to be a submersible pilot in training. In this testimony, we hear about her time spent with Ocean Gate, including in Mission Control, where she was a navigator for some dives navigating Titan to the Titanic. We also hear her thoughts on safety and the culture of the company, the concerns she had both during and after her employment, and how those concerns were handled. As usual, I won't say too much right now, as I think it's important to watch these testimonies in a neutral kind of way. But I, of course, will be back again at the end to touch upon a few things. So for now, let's just begin with the testimony of Antonella Willby and hear about her experiences as part of the Ocean Gate team. I thank you very much, as ever, for clicking on this video. It is greatly appreciated.
Can you please tell me about your educational background?
My academic degrees are all in computer science, and I'm a PhD candidate where I work on computer vision-based robotic mapping and localization. So I do specialize more in software, but I am a field roboticist, and thus my work does involve hardware, software, and field operations.
Did you have any experience in the maritime community prior to working with Ocean Gate?
Yes, since 2018, I have worked part-time, generally between two and five months a year, as a contracted remotely operated vehicle pilot and technician aboard scientific research vessels, but I had not worked in crude submersibles.
When did you begin working with Ocean Gate?
I began working with Ocean Gate in July 2022. I had been contracted for missions three through five of the 2022 Titanic expedition in July 2022. I had visited their facility in April as an interview, April of 2022, but I didn't officially work for them or have any involvement until July 2022.
And what were your intended roles and responsibilities as you understood them as an operations and engineering tech contractor?
Maintenance of the vehicle, of any subsea systems, software, not software development, but sort of maintaining computer systems, downloading data. I was led to believe I would be a pilot in training as well. That didn't occur. And so it was sort of a general position spanning maintenance and then also operations. So I was in Mission Control, serving as a navigator for many of the dives.
As I understand it, you were responsible for helping navigate the Titan to the shipwreck from the top side during one of the missions. Can you explain what that experience was like?
Actually, I think for all dives but Dive 80, I was, at least for part of the dive, in the navigation seat. So having had experience as an ROV pilot, the experience was significantly different. Basically, the procedure was the sub had a Sonadine USBL, which is ultra-short baseline, and it's acoustic positioning system. It doesn't work the same way as GPS. It's all acoustic-based, but you can kind of think about it like a GPS, and that gives an X-Y position and depth of the sub. And this is, you know, a standard system that I've used. But in this case, the procedure was looking at the Sonadine software on a computer, writing the lat-long coordinates down in a notebook, typing those coordinates into Excel, and then importing that Excel spreadsheet into an ArcGIS map where they had... They had a few layers loaded. There was some side scan from somewhere, I don't know. But the primary navigational map was a hand-drawn map that sort of showed, you know, the bow of the Titanic and the debris field and the stern. One, I realized during one of the dives, one of my concerns with this system, in addition to everything else, there were delays because there was this manual process of typing in or first writing down the lat-long coordinates and then typing them in, and then, you know, we tried to do that every five minutes. But it was a lot to do and a lot in the software, rather than just having, you know, every other system I've used has your bathymetry, and then there's a software that just loads those USBL pings as they're coming in on that bathymetry, so you know exactly where you are. There's not this process where it has to be manually inputted. One of my concerns with that system that I realized after a few dives is that... And I had not, I had used ArcGIS briefly in high school, but I had, you know, no real prior experience with the software at this point. So I, you know, don't have a super thorough understanding of how it works. But basically, the coordinate frame, you know, the absolute positioning where you would have the USBL and lat-long, they inputted the Titanic map to that, and it was manually aligned. So there was like a reference point on that map that you would manually align with the ArcGIS coordinate system. So it would be, you know, properly in absolute coordinates. The problem was that it never seemed to be fixed to me, so you could accidentally click and drag this map. And so you might be looking at the map and plotting the pings and thinking, you know, oh, maybe the Titanic is, you know, I would say 50 meters to the west, when in fact it was the map itself that had shifted. So there seemed to be a lot of problems with this system, and it caused issues, particularly in Dive 79. It caused a, you know, significant issue where, and there was also sort of what seemed to be a communications breakdown that contributed to that. But the sub had landed somewhere in the debris field, but never gave, you know, confirmation that they were in the debris field. And then somehow some confusion occurred where it seemed like they weren't where I thought they were on the map. And then they were, you know, sort of the pilot stocked in for this dive took off towards the bow, but never found it, and they just sort of flew around for three hours looking for it while we tried to figure out what was going on, both with what had broken down with the navigation system and the acoustic communications. So that's sort of the overview that I recall of that system.
When you were having issues or when Ocean Gate was having issues with this system, did you voice any concerns or any improvement suggestions to anyone at Ocean Gate?
Yes, I suggested, only because it's a software I've used before and it's widely used in industry, not recommending this exact software, but I informed them that there's software that exists that does this exact thing, that plots bathymetry, or sorry, plots USBL pings on your bathymetry, and you use that for navigation, and you can get bearings and headings, and I've used HiPAC. I suggested that to them as, you know, a possible option that does this. I had some conversations with Phil Brooks where they had said, maybe they wanted to do an in-house system, but they hadn't had the software, you know, team, you know, having time to do that. I did, especially after Dive 79, I was quite concerned about this system, especially after I realized that you could get a lot of error just by accidentally moving this map a few pixels off the reference point. And of course, underwater, you're limited by the distance or light sea, so even, you know, 50 meters, you could be right next to something and not be able to see it. So I did raise those concerns, and I did suggest certain solutions. But I was told that, you know, they had had the world's foremost expert in ArcGIS set up that system, no idea who that was, and that, you know, I wasn't being solution-oriented, so I kind of let it drop. After that conversation, I was no longer on the navigation team.
So as I understand it, you were present during Dive 80 on July 15th, 2022, where a loud bang was heard upon surfacing. Am I correct?
Yes.
Can you please tell me in detail about what you know about that dive?
So as I said, following Dive 79, I was no longer on the communications team, which included the navigation seat. So I was assigned to Sonadine Deck Operations, which basically consisted of, you know, being on deck and turning on and off that Sonadine unit for launch and recovery. For the dive itself, I was on standby, and I spent most of that dive on the deck and in the container where there was a little shop with spare parts and such. So I was not in Mission Control for any part of that dive. And I wasn't aware until the next day that anything had really gone wrong. Like watching the launch and recovery, it actually, to me, looked relatively smoother than anything, any launch and recovery I had seen prior. And it wasn't until the sub did come up, I think slightly later than scheduled, or I don't quite, I don't quite recall. But for some reason, they delayed the debrief until the next morning. Whether it was too late or it had been an early start, I don't quite recall. So at 9:00 AM in the debrief meeting on July 16th, 2022, we were going through the debrief, and one of the customers stated that on ascent, as they were getting fairly close to the surface, I don't know what depth they were actually at, but they heard a bang as loud as an explosion. I later spoke to some of the people who had been in the small boats, helping with the launch and recovery, and one of them told me, I recall clearly, one of them told me they heard it from the surface. Again, I don't know exactly what depth that occurred at. Stockton's response, when the customer brought that up, was to kind of, it seemed to me, immediately shut it down. I recall him saying, "We're not at the part of the debrief where we're discussing ascent and recovery, so we'll discuss it later." Later, we got back to it, and he, again, just sort of, I felt brushed aside. He said, "Well, it was probably just the sled banging against the frame, and then, oh, well, deep-sea vehicles just make lots of noise due to pressure changes." And, you know, I will say, as an ROV pilot, I've never been aboard the vehicle, right? So I don't know what sort of sounds they make. I will say that I've, you know, at this point, been in dozens of launch and recoveries of ROVs and have never heard anything from the surface other than, you know, thruster noise when it's right at the surface. Like, and if that did happen, that would be incredibly concerning, even for a vehicle that doesn't have humans aboard, right? You don't want to lose that vehicle. And so I just felt that it didn't seem like the customer's concerns were taken particularly seriously in that meeting. So following the debrief, I went to Amber Bay, the Director of Administration, to raise my concerns about what I had just heard. And I told her, you know, I'm really concerned about what this customer has said, and that there was a bang as loud as an explosion, and I, you know, I asked what's being done. And her response to that was that, yes, many people are concerned about you. You don't seem to have an explorer mindset. And I was kind of taken aback by that because she didn't acknowledge what I had just said and asked, you know, what was the procedure was, what was going to be done. And then, so I pushed on it a little. She did tell me that the engineering team is having meetings. I was an engineering and operations tech, but, you know, I was a brand-new independent contractor, so, you know, maybe, you know, I was definitely not involved in those meetings. And I continued pressing on it a little bit to kind of say that, you know, reiterate that I, you know, I felt this was quite concerning to hear this report, especially in the context of the haphazardness I'd seen in the rest of the operation. And everything I said, she sort of turned it back around on me and said, "Well, you know, yeah, you have a bad attitude. You don't have an explorer mindset. You, you know, we're innovative and we're cowboys, and a lot of people can't handle that." And at the end of the conversation, I was actually slightly worried about being sued for breach of contract because for some reason, on Mission Five, almost every single one of the staff, like employee engineers and techs, other than the pilots, as well as, I think, every contractor but me, maybe one other was still contracted, I don't really know for sure. But they were sending the entire, you know, technical staff home, and they had made, started making jokes, like in Mission Three, that I was going to be sort of the de facto lead engineer because I was going to be the only one aboard. And this scared me because, number one, you know, I had seen a system three days prior. I had zero experience. I don't have experience in crude submersibles, in life support systems. And even on an ROV team, even not an experimental ROV, like ROVs that have been routinely deployed for 20 years, you know, and have, you know, very well-established procedures, you know, we have a team of, I've never worked on a team of fewer than six. Sometimes it's as many as 10. And so the thought of, like, you know, being the only person out there on a system that I had never seen before was, you know, frightening, and I didn't know if that would expose me to liability. But I also was worried that, you know, if I was the only one and I quit, that that might sort of inspire them to sue me for breach of contract because then they would have no other techs aboard. And so I was a little worried, but by the end of that conversation, she asked if I wanted to be sent home, and I said yes. And so, you know, they booked me a flight for the next day. After this meeting, I went to Phil Brooks, the Director of Engineering. And I asked him if they had seen anything in the dive, like the strain gauge data or the acoustic emission data that corresponded with the customer's report of this loud explosion, explosion sound. And he said, "Well, Stockton and I looked at the data, and, you know, we did see movement in the hole in the strain gauge data." And at this point, I said, "Well, you know," so I want to just make it clear. I am not an expert in carbon fiber at all. I don't really have any expertise in any composite materials. I do have, you know, experience maintaining pressure vessels, but, you know, I've only ever worked with on deep-sea vehicles. They're generally either titanium or stainless steel, sometimes acrylic and aluminum are used in shallow water applications. But I do not have any composite experience, but more from a common sense standpoint, that seemed very worrisome to me. And I kind of, I pressed, and for me as an engineer, like my brain immediately just goes to analyzing all possible failure modes. And despite not being, you know, any sort of expert in composites, it also appeared that, like, I certainly am not an expert, but it didn't appear that anyone else aboard had specific expertise in composite materials, nor did anyone employed at Ocean Gate at the time seem to have any of this expertise. And so for me, you know, I certainly wouldn't want to make that judgment call, but I would want someone with expertise in this particular material to be reviewing this data and determining what was a problem and what wasn't. And so I did bring up, you know, delamination to fill as a, you know, could that have been, you know, something indicated in these data? And he said, "Well, it was only a few microns." And I asked if they were going to continue diving the sub or if they were going to stop the operations until they figured out really what had happened. And he said, "Well, we'll do the next two dives on Mission Five, and then when it gets back to Seattle, we'll do a visual inspection." And after this conversation, I still, what my, I didn't, I was still very concerned because again, as a non-expert, like my very rudimentary understanding of carbon fiber is that, you know, the structure, the strength of the materials comes from like molecular bonds and, you know, the layers, you know, affixed on top of each other. And so like just the difference of a few microns, it seems somewhat meaningless to me without further context of like where it was and, you know, the size of whatever this few micron movement was, you know, it just seemed like it, just because that sounds like a small number doesn't mean that that's not cause for concern, at least with my rudimentary understanding. So I flew home the next day, and I was still really concerned. And by this point, I had decided I wanted to say something before the next dive because they were going to be diving the sub a couple days later. And, you know, in the background, I come from, the culture is sort of, you know, anyone who has a legitimate safety concern should feel free to raise that concern without fear of retribution. And, you know, even if I was wrong, you know, I felt like something should still be said. And so I had decided I was going to go to the Board of Directors, but I didn't actually really know who the Board of Directors were. They had mentioned that there was some astronaut on the Board of Directors, but like, I didn't really know how to contact them or who they were specifically. And so I spoke to one of the media, like her job, she was an Ocean Gate employee, who is a social media and marketing expert, or that was her job. And I spoke to her mostly because we had been cabin mates, and she had been with the company for, I don't know how long, but certainly longer than the two weeks I was there. And she was an employee and, you know, knew how the company worked. And, you know, I kind of, I just wanted, I guess my reasoning was that if, you know, the Board of Directors was all Stockton's cronies, there might be no point in going to them because maybe they wouldn't take it seriously, again, not knowing who they were. And if they were independent, maybe they would take it seriously. And I texted her and asked this question, "Are they Stockton's cronies?" And she said, "No, as far as I know, they're fairly independent." "Why?" And so at that point, I called her on the phone, and she had left the previous week, so she was not on board for Dive 80. And I explained to her what had happened. I explained to her my concerns. And I said, "I'd like to raise this issue to the Board of Directors. I think it's important that this be raised before the next sub-dive." And she cautioned me very strongly to reread my NDA because the Board of Directors is separate from Ocean Gate, and they're not covered under the NDA. And any disclosure to them may be considered a breach of my NDA. And she also cautioned me that the company is extremely litigious. And that kind of matched with certain things I'd heard, you know. I don't recall any specifics, but I kind of, you know, Stockton would sort of make these flippant jokes about, "Oh, if I don't like you, I'll just sue you." You joked about firing me after I refused to dive for their, their launch and recovery, scuba dive for their, their launch and recovery operation because I felt it was entirely unsafe. And so at this point, I guess I just weighed all the factors. And, you know, as a, as a non-expert, as a contractor who'd been there for two weeks, I don't have inside knowledge of, you know, what might have been done that I wasn't privy to, right? And maybe there were procedures in place that I just wasn't aware of. But frankly, the thought of being, you know, sued over something like this, I couldn't defend myself against that. And so after Mission Five, they did two dives to the Titanic depth, and I had people on board telling me, you know, what was going on. And they completed those two dives, and I, you know, I thought, "Well, maybe I was wrong, right? I'm certainly not an expert, and, you know, I would have been happy to have been wrong." So I never did reach out to the Board of Directors after that conversation.
Did you observe anyone inspecting the hull of the Titan after the loud bang?
No. In fact, I asked Phil about that, and he said, "Well, they couldn't inspect it from the outside." And they, there was so much on the inside that had to be taken apart. And he said, "Well, that's too much trouble. That's why we have to do it in Seattle. You know, it would take time. It would delay the dives, basically." And so now I saw no one inspect it at all.
From your experience, what is your opinion of the safety culture at Ocean Gate?
Based on the other outfits I've worked with and, you know, my, my experience in this industry, I saw what I would classify as safety theater. You know, people carrying expensive equipment to, you know, as a locator beacon and, you know, these sorts of things. But nothing, but when actual safety concerns were raised or even plans asked about, like as an example, when I was asked to scuba dive for the launch and recovery operation, I asked several very basic questions about the dive profile, you know, depth, duration, what the water temperature was. Like these are, any scuba diver would ask these. I asked about a dive medicine plan, if there was medical evac in place. You know, where is the nearest hyperbaric chamber? I mean, we're 400 miles off the coast of Newfoundland, so like any evacuation would be delayed significantly. And I asked about those things, and was just told, "Oh, don't worry. It'll be fun. We'll have fun. You know, you'll just observe how it works." And after those conversations, I refused to dive for the operation, scuba dive. But it was things like that and things like just hearing hush-hush kind of whispers and people kind of behind the scenes saying, "This doesn't really make sense, and this seems bad." But no one's saying anything. And then when I did, you know, even, even small things, like when I raised those concerns, you know, immediately being kicked off the navigation team, for example, or, you know, joking about being fired when I didn't scuba dive, you know, when I had safety concerns, which I, just to clarify, I didn't really raise those safety concerns at the time. It was my second day on the job, and I was trying kind of not to be a troublemaker. But I, you know, I said it earlier, like one of the things that has been drilled into me in trainings, both in the sort of offshore industry and in the scientific diving industry, is that anyone should feel free to speak up about the safety issue without fear of retribution. And that is not at all what I saw. I saw, I saw theater. I saw some sort of risk matrix that never fully made sense to me. But then when people would have a legitimate concern, it just seemed like they either wouldn't bring it up or, you know, in my case, I, you know, was entirely dismissed.
From what you observed while onboard the Horizon Arctic, did you feel that Ocean Gate was conducting operations safely?
No. Like, no aspect of the operations seemed safe to me.
What was your specific role during Dive 80?
I was assigned to, I can share the dive plan if you'd like, but I was shared, assigned to Sonadine Deck Operations, which basically involved me turning on the beacon on the vehicle and some of the top-side stuff, like, you know, making sure one of the computers was on. And then I was on standby for the entire dive. And then again, I, you know, was in charge of shutting those things down after the recovery. But I, that was the entirety of my, that was what I was assigned to do on Dive 80.
Based on your experience on the Horizon Arctic, would you have felt comfortable going in the Titan?
I had, you know, initially thought I had thought part of the job for me was being trained as a pilot. And I've wanted, you know, the ROV industry, I've kind of wanted to diversify and, you know, work in both industries. But having had no crude sub experience, I had thought that this might be, you know, an initial training. And I did want to be trained because I've wanted to, you know, pilot a crude sub for a long time. But haven't, you know, been hired. This was the first job I was ever hired for. And it kind of felt like they pulled a bait and switch. There wasn't really time, you know, in the operation to train me. But I saw the sub, and, you know, I was fine with that. You know, I, for years, have been trying to get, you know, training on a crude sub. But when I saw the sub, there were just so many aspects of it that just seemed kind of thrown together. And even the, every question I asked about any of the engineering or design, the answer was never, you know, "Well, here's the data. Here's the analysis we did. Here's the testing." It was always, "Well, this is what Stockton wants." Or, you know, the foremost expert on whatever said it should be this way. But like, there was never any, it was sort of, sort of just was name dropping, like, "Well, NASA does it this way," with no real context. And it just seemed like there was no, at least it wasn't apparent to me what the engineering rigor had been because, you know, when you answer specific questions with like, "That's just what the company founder wants", instead of like actual design decisions and data and analysis, like that just, it was a red flag to me. And so I did not, I would not have, after seeing the sub, I didn't see it. I think it was already in transit, so when I went to the headquarters in April to interview, the sub was not there, and so I didn't see it. But when I saw it, and, you know, I was in it. I was seeing the systems. I was working on it. But I, you know, did not want to pilot it at that point.
Do you feel the reason you left early from your contract was because you had raised safety concerns to Ocean Gate employees?
Yes.
I just have a few follow-up questions for you. When you were taken off the comms and navigation team, you were told that you were not solution-oriented. What did that mean to you?
I was a little confused because in my mind, during that dive, you know, it seemed pretty clear there were multiple breakdowns, and at some point, it was unclear whether the acoustic modem either wasn't delivering messages to the sub or we weren't receiving them. And so that communication link had broken down, and there were some sort of misunderstandings. And then, you know, I felt like I was trying to, you know, analyze every aspect of this navigation system, think about the sources of error, and like figure out what had gone wrong to try to just figure out where the sub was. And, you know, I felt that that was being solution-oriented. I mean, there were five people at the bottom, and I, you know, it seemed like something in the operational system had broken down. And, you know, it wasn't like the sub was entirely lost. We still had USBL pings, and, you know, we knew vaguely where they were, but I couldn't with confidence try to navigate them to any landmark because it seemed like they weren't on the map where I thought they should be. And so during this, I recall Wendy Rush was in the communications seat and Phil Brooks was also in Mission Control. And they started talking about how we have the map and we have the USBL, you know, plots. We can show them. They got close to the Titanic, so if anyone is upset and wants a refund, we can show them. You know, we delivered our part of the service. You got close enough. And I was frankly pretty angry at this because, like, we still had the problem at hand where we didn't know what was going on with the acoustic modem. We didn't know why the navigation seemed to be like off. And so, and then they were talking about profit. And so not being solution-oriented, I mean, I was literally trying to find the solution to what was going on. And, you know, it just sort of seemed like I was sort of blamed for something and, you know, told I wasn't being solution-oriented when I, quite literally, my entire focus was figuring out where in this convoluted navigational system, you know, and procedure, something had gone wrong. So I don't really understand why that was how it was characterized.
Do you have an opinion as to why you were taken off the comms and navigation team?
Yes. I mean, I will admit, you know, when I was quite frustrated, I was very frustrated hearing the discussions while the, while the issue was still actively ongoing about, you know, whether the customers would be upset and want their money back. And I, you know, admit, I can be a little not tactful at times. And I think I made a comment at some point, like, "This is an idiotic way to do your navigation." Which wasn't the most tactful way to say it, I, you know, fully admit, but I do stand by that. It was. Just the whole system was absolutely idiotic. Um, whi- which wasn't the most tactful way to say it, I, you know, fully admit, but I I do stand by that. It was, it just, the whole system was absolutely idiotic. But, um, that of course, wasn't received well. After the dive, Wendy Rush told me, well, we we can retrain you so that you understand how the mapping works because we've had this foremost expert design it for us. And I I was still frustrated. And so I just, you know, I I just still felt like I was trying to get across that there were things in this chain that were breaking down and you could, they could break down without you realizing it. And, you know, the the, you know, even if it was minor fixes, like to try to at least make it so the map couldn't be accidentally dragged and you wouldn't realize that it was offset from where it was actually supposed to be. You know, and and so it was frustrating because I, you know, to be told, well, you just need to be retrained in mapping. Like I was, I was trying to get across the problem I had seen. And instead it was just, well, you don't know what you're talking about.
And you had mentioned the acoustic monitoring system and strain gauges. Were you trained on this systems? And how strain gauges worked?
No, I was trained to download the data after each dive. I had asked some questions of Phil Brooks in my initial training about specifically the acoustic emissions system. Um, I work on robotic localization and mapping, you know, from computer vision, I don't really work on acoustics. But just for my own interest, I had asked him, are you able to, because they had said the acoustic emissions was listening for fiber pops over time, right? But to me, that that's, you know, and they they listened to how loud it was and they said it was louder, you know, at the top of the dive, you know, the the start where the pressure, you know, the the relative pressure changes is most significant. And then it kind of quiets down. But to me, you know, just individual noises of fibers popping, it doesn't, again, as a non-composites expert, it doesn't seem to be the proper metric because, for example, if you had fibers popping all next to each other, developing a weak spot, you know, maybe that sounds, if if your metric is loudness, that might sound the same, but over time you might have developing problems. And this is all just my own sort of, you know, trying to wrap my head around the problem, but I had asked Phil if they were able, because I I don't even know where these acoustic sensors were. I don't know how many of them there were. Um, I don't know what type they were. All I was trained on was to download the data. But I had asked if you were, just for my own interest primarily, if they were able to localize each ping, like the the fiber snaps that they were recording and track them over time and actually localize the 3D position on the hull for each, you know, acoustic emission. And then over time, kind of track this. And he had said, yes, I built some software to do that. Um, but the data processing is really intensive and takes a lot of time, so we don't do that. So so I do recall that conversation, but I never saw that software. I never saw results of that software. So I I don't really know what its status was, how often it was used, you know, how it was, well, ground truth for one. Um, because there's real, you know, how would you ground truth that? So, um, but yeah, my my involvement with that was simply just downloading the data and storing it after each dive.
Thank you. So you weren't involved in analyzing the data, just collecting the data?
Collecting, yes.
Were you trained for your duties and assigned tasks on Dive 80?
Yes. I, I mean, my tasks were, as far as I recall, pretty much limited to turning on the sonar dine beacon on the vehicle and then turning on like the the computer system that was somewhere. Um, and and like, uh, yeah. So yes, I was trained for that and and assigned those duties, but but pretty much I I didn't have anything to do other than that. I was not, I didn't. So I I never saw the data from that dive. I never downloaded it, one or the other. Um, I don't actually know who downloaded it, but someone who wasn't me. So yeah, at that dive, I was just turning on and off the sonar dine beacon.
And in your opinion, do you think that being under a nondisclosure agreement prohibited you from bringing up critical safety issues to the company or the Board of Directors?
Not to the company. I assume that was sort of covered. But yes, to the Board of Directors, yes. If I had not been under that agreement, I I would have said something.
Uh, with regards to the downloading process, how long did that take? Can you please describe to me the process from downloading the acoustic emissions and strain data from the Titan submersible?
To the best of my recollection, because I I did it after, I think, maybe four dives and it's it's been a couple of years. But we would go inside the sub with a laptop and plug it into the computers onboard the Titan and just copy those files to a hard drive and then, um, take that either to the laptop hard drive or perhaps an external drive. I don't recall. The copying process didn't take very long at all. Um, the data wasn't particular. There, so there was other other diagnostics that was also downloaded during that, um, time as well. So I, you know, thruster data, other, you know, data. So there and I didn't really understand the software in in detail. And so I knew there were, you know, basically logs and diagnostics and then these, um, strain gauge and acoustic emission data that all needed to be downloaded. It didn't take particularly long. The 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 amount of data wasn't super significant. I don't really recall specific numbers. Um, I would say on the order of tens of gigabytes, if that. Um, not including camera data, which I don't recall how that was handled. I I don't believe I ever was in charge of that. And then we would take that laptop back to a room where we had set up sort of, you know, engineering computers. And then it was stored somewhere on those computers. I don't really recall exactly where.
Did you ever observe or were you part of the 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 next process at this point? So did Mr. Brooks or any of the pilots analyze the data from the previous dive that you witnessed?
Not that I witnessed. I was never trained on that.
Were you involved in the, in Dive 80, the post-dive meeting?
I, was there a post-dive meeting separate from the all-hands debrief?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
So the all-hands debrief, you were part of that?
Yes.
And while at the all-hands debrief, was there any mention of the submersible being stuck on the Titan, Titanic?
Not that I recall, not on that dive.
On a previous dive? Was it ever mentioned?
I had heard people talk, and this was before I was onboard, I had heard people talk about an incident. It may have been in 2021 where, and I don't recall if it was stuck on the Titanic itself or if it was some other entanglement with something on the seabed. But I recall people talking about the sub being stuck and, um, stuck and not wanting to drop, because you, they they could basically drop the hull off of the entire, um, the sled, they called it. But that, you know, drops a lot of your sensors and is expensive. So I I recall people talking about that as some past event. But I was not onboard for that and I didn't have any, you know, firsthand account of of that.
At one point, uh, after the loud bang, you mentioned that you were told, uh, I'm trying to phrase or what you said, that there was something about a few microns difference. Can you go into that, what that meant to you and what that indicated?
I didn't really know, to be honest. Like I I, I was told there was a network of strain gauges placed throughout the hull in the manufacturing process. And they were intended to, I I think what I recall is they were intended to monitor the hole during the the manufacturing process and and testing after. But they weren't intended to be a real-time monitoring system or or data system after the testing phase. But the sensors still worked and so they collected the data and and used them. Um, but I I didn't know where they were. I didn't know specifically how many they were. You know, I I, my, what what I had understood from that conversation was that they were not on the outside of the hole specifically, but they were throughout the hole. But but I I I don't really know for sure. That was just sort of what I had conceived after what what was explained to me. But I I, you know, and I didn't know if a few microns, well, just, I didn't know if that was, you know, deformation of the the overall hull, if that was something internal to the hull. I I guess in my mind, what my mind jumped to was something internal to the hole. Because I, you know, despite carbon fiber stiffness, I, again, non-expert, but I I assume there would be some deformation seen. And in fact, I I did see certain strain gauge plots, but I didn't really understand them. And, you know, they were never really explained to me. Um, and there were so many other things going on, I never really, you know, sat down with Phil and and asked for, you know, more detailed information. My job is really just co- collect the data. So, yeah, I guess in my mind, I I sort of had a concept of of what that meant because I thought the sensors were throughout the hole. And so I guess I thought it was relative movement in the hole and not like an overall deformation. But I I don't know for sure. It just seemed worrisome. I also don't know where that measurement came from, like, you know, like I said, is that across the entire hole? Is that in a portion of the hole? Like I I just don't know the answer to those things. And without some clarification on that, I was still concerned.
Going back to, I believe you said you heard the loud bang?
I did not. I was on the deck of the ship, um, very far away from the Lars. I spoke to one of the small boat operators after the fact. And he mentioned, and this is, you know, just me recalling what he told me, I did not hear it myself. But he was on a boat above the Lars, you know, where the sub was surfacing, and he said he could hear it from the surface.
And going back to when you were on the navigation team, I I believe you said that at some point you lost the text communications with the submersible Titan from the surface. Is that correct?
I don't know for sure. It appeared to me that the communications either weren't getting through or weren't being received. Because for every communication, we were supposed to receive a reply and acknowledgement. And and as I recall, I never sat at the comm station. Wendy Rush was doing that the entire time that I was, for for every dive I was part of, um, in Mission Control. I don't recall whether they logged those communications and whether, you know, you could see if messages were dropped on the other side by comparing the two transcripts. During that dive, somehow with with the, you know, breakdown in communications, I it seemed to be the conclusion that they had not replied and maybe the acoustic modem wasn't working and we weren't getting those messages or they weren't getting our messages. But we weren't getting responses back to basically confirm, you know, do you see the debris field, which would have confirmed they were on the map where the USBL was saying they were. Later, so so I was never really involved in a debrief, like a comms team. Only every debrief that I was involved in was in all hands and of course, customers were there. You couldn't really discuss specific operational issues because you're in front of, you know, paying customers that you don't necessarily want to go into the the nitty gritty, you know, of the operational details. But we didn't have any sort of like team-specific debrief after that to figure out what exactly had gone wrong. After I, but but I did, you know, speak, I don't, I don't recall who I spoke to, if it was one of the, maybe it was, I, yeah, I don't, I don't recall who I spoke to. But after the fact, I sort of walked away with the impression that they had been receiving our messages. But for some reason, the pilot just didn't reply and they had reached the debris field. But because he didn't acknowledge that, we thought there had been a breakdown. So so I I don't really know the answer to that, whether there actually was a breakdown and the modems were dropping messages and we were not receiving each other's messages. Or whether it was just, you know, human error and the messages were received but just not acknowledged. I I don't definitively know the answer to that.
The Horizon Arctic had its own Kongsberg HIPAP system, is that right?
I, yes. I I don't know that they were using HIPAP specifically, but yes, they had a Kongsberg transceiver on the on the ship's hull.
Were they tracking the sub themselves?
Yes.
And could they feed that data to you somehow or at least let you know where the sub was?
So during that operation Dive 79, where the navigation and acoustic communications broke, broke down in some way, um, I believe it was the second mate was currently on watch on the bridge. And he, you know, heard what was going on in the discussions and he came over and he said, look, I I have them on our map. Like I can show you exactly where they were, where they are. And I said, yes, please, please show that to me because I'm confused and something's gone wrong. I I want to see that. And then Wendy sort of put a stop to that and said, you know, this is our operation, you know, we we have our procedure. And so he he went back to the bridge and this was all happening, you know, on the bridge, but he went back to his, you know, station. Um, later I I did briefly see, not not during this dive, but I saw, you know, they they did have the USBL pings on on their bathymetry. But and and I did, I I I wanted to see where that was, but I I couldn't walk away from my position because I was busy writing down lat-long coordinates. And, you know, Wendy sort of, it it seemed to me that it was, you know, it was their operation and they didn't want any interference. Um, and to me, I just wanted to know where the sub was as a sanity check so that we could get back on track. But that was sort of shut down and I didn't want to, you know, subvert the chain of command.
So to do that, they'd have to put a Kongsberg transponder on the sub as well as a sonar mine transponder? Or does one transponder work with both?
As I recall, so for that particular, so the the sub actually had three transponders onboard. For the first thousand meters, they used a Teledyne ATM system. Um, and someone would go out, it has like a physical box. Someone would go out on the small boat during launch and recovery and stick a pole with the top side, you know, a responder in the water. And on the radio, call out depths. And I don't think they called out lat-long. I think it was just depths, but they tracked the sub with that system to the first thousand meters. I believe that system is only rated to thousand meters. It does doesn't work beyond that is, uh, is was what I understood. At a thousand meters, they switched to the sonar dine system. Um, and use that for all the tracking and localization sub 1,000 meters. And that that was because there was a configuration problem of some sort with that sonar dine, um, which I did try to fix and they had asked me, you know, I I do have a little bit of experience, but I, you know, on on those units. And I've used them on other systems and they they track up until, you know, whatever their their spec says. I mean, once you get at the surface, your tracking sort of goes away or is very inaccurate. But, you know, anywhere from 10 meters down, you you have good tracking if if the, if the unit is configured properly. So I had tried, um, various sound speed profiles, you know, trying to see what was wrong. And at some point I I told them, look, you know, Teledyne has 24/7 technical support. I think we should email them and we should ask their opinion, you know, why can't we get this working? Because I tried everything I could and I couldn't get it to work. And they said, their response was, again, seemed odd. It was, well, they they don't, they're not really 24/7. And so they never reached out to tell, to to sonar dine that I recall. They also had a Kongsberg unit onboard. And so, oh, for the sonar dine, what I recall is they had rented, so they owned the beacon, that it was like an AV Traxx6 that was on the sub. They owned that and they had rented a, like a ship-mounted transceiver for that sonar dine unit. The ship had a Kongsberg transceiver. And they had also put a Kongsberg beacon on the sub. But I never saw that Kongsberg work. And I don't know if that was what the ship was tracking, like if the ship had it working and we just didn't have that. I I I don't, I don't really know, but I do recall that that configuration, they did have three separate beacons. The sonar dine only worked below 1,000 meters. The Kongsberg, I never saw work once. And they had said, well, we've seen it work in the past. But from my understanding, the past was, you know, a different rented, you know, transceiver on the ship, a different ship possibly entirely. So like just because it had worked in the past, the the configuration had changed, the hardware had changed. And and so, um, I I just suggested reaching out to the manufacturers and and asking, you know, for their advice. And because, so also the Kongsberg beacon on the sub was rented. And so, you know, they they had never used that particular unit before and, you know, I I never saw it work.
At this time, I'd like to shift the questioning to Ocean Gate Council.
Thank you. Ms. Wilby, did you consult with anyone other than the Ocean Gate social media manager on whether the NDA prevented you from sharing info with the Board of Directors?
In Ocean Gate or externally?
At Ocean Gate.
No.
Did you consult with anyone externally?
No.
I believe Mr. Fawcett has a follow-up question.
So had you not been bound by a nondisclosure agreement from Ocean Gate, who would you have specifically reached out to at the Ocean Gate Board of Directors to raise your safety concerns with?
I wasn't sure if there was a contact email or any sort of contact that went directly to the board. I I had planned to just find their names and and write to them, but I didn't, I I didn't know the best way to approach it. And it was very time, it it felt to me to be time-critical. I felt that it should be raised before the next subdive. But I I didn't know who to go to. I just knew there was a Board of Directors. I thought I could find them publicly, you know, that that information. I have worked, a colleague who formerly was on, I think, one of the boards of the Ocean Gate Foundation, although she left many years prior and I I did ask her about getting in touch with the Board of Directors. I didn't have a specific name, you know, I, you know, and and after that conversation and and not really knowing what liability or, you know, risk I would be exposing myself to, I kind of dropped it and didn't, you know, send any communications to anyone.
While you were contracted by Ocean Gate, did they have any kind of like safety telephone number or email address where safety concerns could be sent to upper management?
Not that I'm aware of.
And then on the expedition that you were on, did you observe that Ocean Gate employees or contractors could freely raise their safety concern with Ocean Gate senior managers that happened to be aboard the vessel?
No. It didn't appear that way. I don't know if people did speak to them privately, like I did or attempted to. But there wasn't, that I recall, any sort of, you know, announcement in a safety briefing of like, here's who you go to, you know, in management or concerns. No, it didn't, it didn't seem that way to me, no.
I think you had mentioned that you felt, I'm paraphrasing, like you were the last engineer or were becoming the last engineer onboard during the 2022 expedition. Do you know if that was due to like planned departures of engineers or unplanned? I'm thinking about illnesses or other types of issues. Can you expand on that a bit?
I think they were planned departures, if I recall correctly, you know, for personal reasons or for, on the part of Ocean Gate staff engineers. I don't know about contractors. My departure was unplanned, but I am not aware of anyone else's departure being unplanned.
Thank you.
So that concludes the testimony of Antonella Willby. And it is interesting to hear from someone who was part of the navigation and communication process for some of Titan's dives. I don't believe I've heard a case where the communication to and from Titan was ever described in a positive way. From when first compiling interviews and reports from my initial Ocean Gate documentary to now, almost two years later, whenever the communication is brought up as a topic, the same issues seem to be continually repeated. This also includes, as stated in this testimony, the navigational pings that communicated the sub's location to Ocean Gate Mission Control. On that same topic of navigation, Ms. Willby speaks about the convoluted process regarding the software used for the mapping system and input of data, which she described as unlike any she had previously used, which all performed the same tasks automatically with no manual input required, such as writing down information on a notepad and then typing it into Excel as it's stated to have took place at Ocean Gate. Also, things like the map not being locked onto the screen and being able to be accidentally dragged around. She states on one dive how she was unable to plot the sub's location and how Stockton Rush attempted to, but was unable to find the bow of the Titanic even after three hours. When raising concerns to Phil Brooks, a former Ocean Gate engineer, who has also provided his own testimony to the Coast Guard, it is stated he said Ocean Gate possibly wanted to do something in-house, but that the software team just hadn't had the time. After Dive 79, where Ms. Willby says she realized the problems with the map being dragable, she states that she was told that the system had been designed by an expert and that she was not being solution-oriented, even though her concerns contained solutions, such as other software she'd previously used, which would do a better job. Also, after that conversation, it stated she was then dropped from the navigation team. It is around this section of the testimony that she touches upon something I said in a previous video, that being that Ocean Gate seemed incredibly keen on name dropping, be it Boeing or NASA, as if, I feel, it would add some kind of confidence to their operation to outsiders. Even though, given the eventual path of Titan's build and operations, quite how much the company took away from any advice given from those well-known names is questionable. This would also be another case of someone being punished within the company for merely stating their concerns or questioning the way that things were done. Other people such as David Lockridge is a prime example, who was let go from the company and eventually sued because of the safety concerns he raised with Titan. In the testimony of Dave Dyer of the University of Washington Applied Physics Lab, we hear how, after upsetting the head of engineering, Tony Nissen, the partnership between Ocean Gate and the physics lab were severed shortly afterwards. And here is another example. Rather than listening to the actual concerns an employee has, Ms. Willby was stated to have been removed from the navigation team instead and relocated to the ship's deck. Moving on to Dive 80, the dive with the loud bang incident, which I'm sure a lot of us are aware of, working on the ship's deck, Ms. Willby confirms that she was too far away from Titan's landing platform to hear anything herself and didn't even hear about the incident until the next day at a 9:00 AM debrief, where it would be one of the customers, aka a mission specialist, who described hearing a bang as loud as an explosion as Titan ascended. Ms. Willby says she spoke to some of those who were in the smaller recovery boats, one of whom said they'd heard the bang from the surface. It is then stated that Stockton Rush at first shut this topic down in the meeting and then when coming back to address it, simply put it down to being a regular occurrence due to pressure changes. I know these testimonies can be debated in the fact that the speakers may not always be telling the exact truth. For example, both David Lockridge and Renata Rojas both have very different accounts of a dive that they were on together to the wreck of the Andrea Doria. But when fingers are pointed in Stockton Rush's direction and after hearing the words of the man himself regarding safety and innovation, it feels hard to deny these accounts of him being dismissive to concerns and unmoving in how he wanted things done, regardless of what anyone else thought, including the MTS, for example, whose letter we have learnt was made clear to him and spoke of the risky road that he was taking. Following that debrief, Ms. Willby states she went to Amber Bay, who was the head of administration, someone else who we will see a testimony from, by the way, to voice her concerns, stating that the customer's issue wasn't taken seriously. She says she was then told by Amber Bay that yes, people were in fact concerned about her and that she didn't have an explorer mindset. Ms. Willby also quotes Ms. Bay as having said, "We are innovative, we are cowboys and a lot of people can't handle that," which in itself is a very concerning thing to hear, especially if that's the mentality that runs through numerous departments of a company. This then led to another conversation with Phil Brooks, asking him about the string gauge data relating to the loud bang and was told he and Stockton had looked over it and that there was movement in the hull, but stated it was only a few microns and that they would still perform the next two dives before the sub returned to shore where they would perform a visual inspection. Accounts have varied through various testimonies as to whether any maintenance was actually carried out on Titan after that incident, ranging from yes to "I was told they did" to "I assume so" to, in this case, "No." When asked if she thought Ocean Gate were performing operations safely, Ms. Willby definitively states "No," that she would not consider any part of the operation safe. And speaking further about when asking questions about Titan's engineering or design, rather than getting a straight answer, instead she was informed that it was what Stockton wanted or again, that it was developed by a leading figure in the field or was connected to, for example, NASA or Boeing in some way. Again, name dropping. Being someone who asks questions rather than being simply a team player is ultimately what Ms. Willby believes to be the reason she left her position with Ocean Gate earlier than planned. One takeaway from the tragedy has always been that Ocean Gate prioritized profit over passenger safety and this has echoed once more here, as according to Ms. Willby, as she states that both Wendy Rush and Phil Brooks, rather than dealing with the navigational problems that they were having in pinpointing Titan's exact location, were instead conversing about how they had proved that the sub had gotten within a certain distance of the Titanic and thus, the company had upheld its end of the deal and would not have to refund anyone. As I said earlier, with these testimonies and the nature of them, there is always that lingering possibility that what is being said is not entirely the truth or that perhaps certain things have been left out. Though in this case, and in other instances Ms. Willby described in detail, I find them entirely believable and given the nature of her departure from the company, that being before the tragedy happened, I see no reason why such in-depth statements would need to be fabricated. Luckily, two of the people Ms. Willby's concerns were raised to are also featured in their own testimonies. So providing the Coast Guard is thorough, we will also get to hear their sides of the story too. One area I did think made Ms. Willby uncomfortable and perhaps has a regret of hers is that she didn't pursue her concerns further. This, of course, was partly due to fear of the NDA or nondisclosure agreement in place and that she was not an expert in submersibles, but still stated that she felt her concerns were time-critical. I know she described attempting to find out if, for example, the board of directors could be contacted publicly, though after Titan completed its next two dives, she decided to just drop it. I do understand the predicament concerning the NDA and the total lack of response to her concerns from those at Ocean Gate. And being an independent contractor who didn't receive the level of safety and opportunities that were initially offered, such as being trained as a sub-pilot, I can imagine it came to a point where Ms. Willby just felt done, especially after Titan went on to complete those last two dives and finished the expedition. She also does backtrack a little or elaborates more on a few things, like if they actually did lose text communication with Titan, though even then remained completely open and suggested checking the chat logs to find out, showing no hesitation. As just stated, I think these more uncomfortable moments stem from the topic of raising concerns and trying to get across how she felt that in many ways she just couldn't. Even if Ms. Willby had gone further and managed to make someone aware, it still does not mean that the outcome would be any different. Because I'm thinking back to David Lockridge and the great lengths he went to to stop what Ocean Gate were doing and still he was unsuccessful, despite his proof, experience and time working at the company. And this also feeds into what Ms. Willby described as the culture to be like at Ocean Gate, that being that many had concerns, though none would raise an alarm, possibly out of fear, as just as we've seen, questioning anything about the company or safety issues resulted in backlash, relocation of duties or simply dismissal. So that concludes the testimony of Antonella Willby and I hope you found it insightful, hearing about her experiences. Next up is the man who co-founded Ocean Gate with Stockton Rush, that being Guillermo Sonline, which is a testimony I've been eager to cover on the channel. It will be in two parts and the first will be uploaded very, very soon. So until then, thank you very much once again for clicking on this video. It is really appreciated and bye for now.